Ready to go.
Okay.
Uh, starting meeting at six oh seven. Oh, seven. First item on the agenda is account one zero eight three regional agencies on page one seventy four. And who is speaking for? This item.
So I just promoted somebody from the Council of Governments.
Okay, great. Yeah, it's Amanda Kennedy at Executive Director at SCOG. And we're making our annual request for municipal dues. The amount should be the same as it was last year, just under sixteen thousand dollars. Among other things, this money is used to provide our local match for federal and state transportation, transportation planning funds. And for which we need to provide a ten percent match. That's a that's a good chunk of these funds. They also provide general activities. For example, in the last year, we prepared a regional hazard mitigation plan. We're finishing up an open space plan. And as John can attest, we've been working with the town of Groton staff quite a lot on sustainability and issues that have to do with the submarine base and electric boat growth. So happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions?
No, it sounds like this is the amount is determined.
Right.
Population. Yep.
Okay, we're all set there.
Thank you.
Thank you. And on the second item here. Southeastern Connecticut Enterprise Region. And we have the southeastern area Transit Authority and the southeastern Connecticut.
Did the first one?
Probably now we do this all as one, one number.
Yep, thanks.
So the enterprise region is again dues based on capita rate, so. It looks like it's seventeen two eighty-five. It's the same as it was. The next item, Cross Center. It's the southeastern area Transit Authority. Again, it's the same number. It's a little higher, a little higher this year, five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Is anyone from? Seat here?
Yes, this is Mike Carroll, General Manager.
Mike Carroll. How do you spell your? Oh, I got it. Never mind.
That's okay.
Okay. Speak.
Sure. See, see this requesting funds to support public transit service in Groton. It's essentially to maintain current services with the current budget. We did ask for increases due to increased labor costs and insurance costs and some other input costs as well, primarily in parts and supplies. The good news is that there is some additional state funding that has been made available to the district, which includes expanded transit service in the town of Groton, including Sunday service, additional hour service on the RAV eleven line. Also, a new route, Route six twenty-seven connecting the subbase down to Eastern Point EB area. And then finally, a new microtransit demand response service in the eastern portion of Groton over in the Mystic Noak area. We hope that we're going to be starting that microtransit service first weekend in May in two weeks' time. And we're also really been beating the bushes, so to speak, to hire additional operators to support the service expansion on the fixed route side of service. So we hope to start that with the beginning of the new fiscal year, July one or shortly thereafter.
Can you say more about microtransit? I have a guess, but.
Sure. Microtransit is essentially a demand response service. It's similar to like an Uber or Lyft type service. And we have a mobile app that customers can download for free called Spare Rider.
Okay, so similar to what exists in New London.
Correct, exactly. New London and also Stonington.
Thank you.
Sounds great. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. And the last one in this is the southeastern Connecticut Regional Probate Court. And thanks, Mike, for that.
You're welcome.
Is anyone talking here?
Yes, I'm here. This is Elizabeth Lehman. Hi, how's everyone?
Good.
Great. Thank you. Good. I'm the judge of probate for the southeastern Connecticut Regional Probate Court. And we, we have to, we're statutorily required to have each town contribute to the probate court. And it's based on per capita. So the numbers have changed a little bit based on per capita for the the census numbers. So we updated that and but I think it remains largely the same. There's a slight increase, I believe, in the budget for the probate court, and it's basically due to increased postage, paper costs, some administrative costs, and some connectivity costs that we are going to incur in the upcoming fiscal year. So I'm happy to answer any questions or any questions about the good work that the probate court does.
Any, any questions? No, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looks very reasonable.
Well, thank you all. Thank you for your service.
Thank you for yours. Okay, do I have a motion for one fifty-seven four one six for?
I will move one fifty-seven four one six.
For accounting?
For account one zero eight three.
Second. Um, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. And okay, next item. Account one zero eight four Health and Service Agencies on page one seventy-seven. Okay. So first cost center is Ledge Light Health District. Aye.
Hello. Hi, everybody. My name is Jen Muggio. I'm the Director of Health with Ledge Light Health District. Happy to present our budget, which is also set according to statute for capita basis. We are required by statute to use the numbers transmitted to us by the Department of Public Health. And this year, those numbers for population from that the Department of Public Health has directed us to use are not changing. Everybody is directed to use a different set of numbers. So that's why you heard the probate court is using the census numbers. We are have to use those numbers from DPH. The per capita rate that's established by our Board of Directors and the representation on the Board of Directors is also based on per capita. So the town of Groton has three representatives on our board, and the city of Groton has one. And they've established the per capita rate for next fiscal year to be the same as this fiscal year. So essentially, it's a flat budget because neither of the things that would result in a change are changing. Happy to answer any questions about our services, but no change in the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate what you do.
Thank you very much.
And this year, the VNA is zero. As it's so the next cost center of interest is the school nursing service. Which now is anyone? School board thinks I can. I would.
My understanding is that funding that typically went to the VNA is now being absorbed. Not able to.
Right. Yeah, this John Birch, sorry, I'm doing two different meetings at once, but yes, it's been moved to the school budget. Because they are now going to be and they discontinued their services for the end of this fiscal year, and the schools are going to be employing nurses.
Okay. It's and there's no, no difference in the cost from.
There's no increase.
No, no increase from last year.
No.
Magic. Okay. Thanks, John. Now, the next item is Groton Ambulance.
Hello.
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 I am Chuck Kanicki, the President of Groton Ambulance. We had a zero increase from last year's budget. So I am here to answer any questions. We cut some things, and even though with inflation going up and everything, we were able to maintain it at zero increase. So.
Good job.
Thank you.
How many calls do you average a week? Or any, any unit of time?
We do about five thousand calls a year.
Okay.
So we're one of the busier services in southeastern Connecticut. And we're fortunate that we have two crews on from six AM till midnight.
How many staff?
Two ambulances from six AM till midnight. And one definitely from midnight to oh six. That tends to be a slower portion. So we were able to cut back some on that. What we found is we're getting a lot more calls to our nursing homes in the district because commercial ambulance services are kind of dwindling a little bit. So we would get a call to a nursing home for irregular laps. Normally, that would be a commercial ambulance service that would handle it. The nursing homes, they don't want that patient sitting there, and sometimes they give an ETA of of six to eight hours. So instead, they call us. So we recently lost our PE Quot transfers, but we've since picked up some more from our nursing homes. So it kind of is evened out for money coming in.
Nursing homes to hospitals.
Yes, we're only allowed by law to transport to a hospital. We can't do, you know, if we get calls weekly of my son is in a wheelchair and he has to go for this treatment, can you pick him up? By law, we're not allowed to. Our license doesn't allow that. So I wish there was a way that we could, because it's a service that the residents need. And with American Ambulance and AMR not really servicing this area, there's a need for it. But I don't make the laws. I just follow them. So.
What percentage of your costs are labor costs about?
Um, actual percentage?
What, I guess.
If you factor in salaries, benefits, we don't get insurance from the town. So we have, when we have five people going for our insurance, our premiums are astronomical because and we've tried to get it from the town, but I would say off the cuff figures, probably about fifty percent, if not more. Because you also have to factor into that workers' comp, all of our liability insurances.
I would think fifty percent would be low, yeah.
Yeah. I could figure it out for you, but it's.
Just question.
Yeah, it's and it's it's really hard because we're having a staffing shortage, not only in southeastern Connecticut, but nationwide for EMS. COVID really did a number on a lot of agencies and a lot of services, EMS being one of them. Because the risk was just so great that people didn't see a reward on that risk. I'm asking people to go into somebody's house who's potentially contaminated or infected, and they can take that home to their family, and I'm paying them minimum wage. They're like, I don't need it. And it's a stressful environment. We see people at their absolute worst. You know, nobody ever calls us to say, hey, we just made cookies. Come on by, you know? So if my staff has been excellent through COVID, we took a lot of precautions. We learned a lot of things, as did everybody else. But we have a good core group. We've started an intern program with Fitch High School. We just hired four interns. They are seniors in high school. They are taking the EMT class at Fitch. We just had their onboarding, so they're actually getting real world experience before they get their license. Because we can't rely on the traditional ways of people saying, I want to help my community. So I'm going to be an EMT, and I'm going to volunteer to give up my time. It's just not feasible for us. Anyway, we find it's not. And it's, it's more reliable for us to have the ambulances in the building waiting to respond. Other organizations have different business models, but this what this is what seems to work for us, especially especially with the amount of call volume that we see. And the other issue that we are kind of, I don't want to say unique, but our demographics are a lot where they don't have insurance. They don't have, they don't have the ability to pay for their bills. So on an average call, the state sets our minimum, our maximum rate that we can charge. Once it goes through Medicare and Medicaid and the insurance companies, we're getting a fraction of that. So our demographics to in Groton Ambulance's response area, we don't have the people that have private insurance that are paying the full rate. So out of that, um, those five thousand calls, we're less than forty percent of actual fully insured people. And it's not like McDonald's where you can't afford your hamburger. We're not going to give you a hamburger. We are respawn, we required by law to provide service regardless of their financial status. And we, I think we do a very good job of that. My staff that I have is outstanding when it comes to patient care. My staff doesn't even ask billing information. We, we don't want people to feel like they're not good enough, or they're not able. We, my, my crews focus on patient care. I worry about the billing. I worry about recouping the money. That's not for them to worry about. That's for me to stay up at night and worry about. So either way, all said and done, we were able to keep a zero percent increase, and we're comfortable with that. And if you guys have any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, cost center five service agencies.
I'm not sure what service agent, what you qualified for.
Yeah, just a service agency request forwarded town manager. So I guess the town manager.
So let's see, there are different service agencies. You have sector already went, NLHH, SCAD, maybe Safe Futures and ARC.
Yeah, well, is, yeah, the whole list.
I guess which, do you have questions of any of the groups?
If anyone wants to say anything, I'll let them say anything. Otherwise.
The budget went up twenty-five thousand dollars, just curious.
To which one?
The, the one oh eight four five service agencies as a group went from one twelve oh four eight in twenty twenty-four to one thirty-seven four eight six in twenty twenty-five.
CFS and behavioral health was an increase. Yeah, always, always homes was an increase. Meals on Wheels. And yeah. Yeah, Meals on Wheels.
Small increase at Kingsbury Heritage Park. It's, it's the, it's the food center, the bottom.
Gemma Murray.
That's the, yeah.
Yeah, it was added.
Yeah.
The United Way Food Center, Labor Food Center. So.
Okay.
Looking.
Yeah.
TVCCA.
Always Home is here.
TVCCA is part of it. That's one of the largest part of it. Is Meals on Wheels.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Eugene Thrum. I'm the Director of Nutrition Services for TVCCA.
Okay.
Our mission is to deliver Meals on Wheels to homebound seniors throughout Groton. We delivered to a hundred and four seniors. And that was about almost eighteen thousand meals that are cost to TVCCA of about a hundred and seventy-five thousand. What we're asking for, the, what we're asking for the funds to offset the cost.
Oh, I'm ready to, oh. You hit the wrong person. Sorry then. Uh, hold on. Let me see if I can.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, sorry, my bad.
Okay, what?
You were offsetting the cost. We watched that you were for offsetting the costs and.
Yeah, for the, we have two paid drivers that deliver Meals on Wheels in Groton, and I have a third volunteer route. So the, what we're asking for is to help offset the cost of those two paid drivers.
Okay. Got it. Okay.
I'd be glad to see. Are you going in a certain order?
No.
No, okay. I'll jump in.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Jennifer Chudukwitz. I'm with SCAD, Southeastern Council on Alcoholism and Drug Dependence. We have been providing substance use disorder treatment for fifty-eight years in southeastern Connecticut. In fiscal year July one, two to June thirty, twenty twenty-three, we provided treatment services, a variety of treatment services to four hundred and eighty-six individuals that identified as living in Groton. And the funds that we request, similar to the hamburger analogy, our door is always open, as you know. Anyone can walk up and ring the doorbell, which I'm sure your team has rung that doorbell in the middle of the night sometimes. Twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a week. So anyone is provided service regardless of whether they're insured or uninsured, documented, undocumented, it doesn't matter. We're going to care for folks and get them the treatment and get them on their pathway to recovery. And if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Hi, I will jump in. My name is Tricia Cunningham from Always Home. We are a service agency working with families with minor children throughout eastern Connecticut. And a majority of our clients come from Groton. And first, I want to say thank you for the tremendous outpouring of support from the town of Groton in the form of the ARPA funds for our Groton Wheels to Work program. Through that program, we've been able to give direct client assistance just just to Groton residents, direct client assistance, ten families, almost fifteen thousand dollars. So that's made an immediate impact on housing stability. When you can get to work, you can pay your bills. So far this fiscal year, our numbers in the town of Groton have gone up. It was quite surprising. Our client assistance, so we were asking for a slight increase after not having asked for an increase in years past. Just to note, any funding that comes from Town of Groton is direct client assistance. So that doesn't go to staffing or any other overhead funding that you give to Always Home would go directly to Town of Groton residents.
Thank you.
Like.
And sorry, how many, how many clients do you serve in a month or a year?
For families, it ranges, but around three hundred and forty is our annual. However, so far this year, we have gone up. Let me just pull that up. So far this year, and this is as of April one, we've already served three hundred and forty-seven families compared to last year's three twenty-one. And we have a small staff. There's five of us, and we do client assistance, past due rent, forward rent assistance, the transportation issues and childcare. Our ideal scenario is if we can keep families where they are currently housed. And we also work with two-on-one. We are a family hub where what that means is we do shelter diversion. So we work with families on the shelter list, so or putting families on a shelter waitlist or diverting them so that they don't need to access shelter. One of the things I'll share, so again, our ideal scenario is if we can keep families housed where they are at. Right now, there is a shelter waitlist throughout the state, and in the eastern side of the state, we are seeing. So for all of eastern Connecticut, there's over twenty families on the shelter waitlist. These are families with minor children that and don't have housing. And I can go on and on about that. And, and I know it's something that the town of Groton and the city of Groton is dealing with right now with a lot of the rental properties that have been purchased. We're going to be seeing more, more families struggling to find housing. So thank you for your support. It makes a difference when we can help somebody.
Um.
Go ahead.
Hi there, folks. This is Karen DeSantis. I'm the Director of the VNA. And we actually do have a budget on the, the table for this year for wellness. So I just wanted to make sure that I, the schools is off the table for us, but the wellness is, is still there. It was in the amount of twenty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty dollars.
It's here.
It's here.
Okay, that, well, well, wonderful. So you don't have questions for, for me? I'm all set?
If there's anything you want us to know.
Yeah.
Just that we, we cut the budget in, in half for the indigent care, because we did not have the referrals this past year and did not use it. And we didn't want to earmark the, the money and have it sitting there and not used. I'm going to watch that for this year and see why we don't seem to be getting the, the patients who need that funding. So I may come back next year and ask for an increase again, but at this time, we are, are, are good with half of what we normally ask for, for that. And as far as the wellness program, that, that'll stay the same. We are still seeing a lot of people in blood blood pressure clinics. So it's going well there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, this is Margaret Susloff. I'm from Safe Futures Domestic Violence Service Agency. And Groton has supported us for many years. And also, I'd like to thank, we have been receiving ARPA funding for our prevention education program in the schools. We've been working in the middle school and high school this year, and we will next year. But the ninety-six hundred dollars we're asking is for our overall. But the ninety six, um, hundred dollars we're asking is for our overall operations. We serve over ten thousand people a year, we serve about twelve percent of that is in Groton area. And, um, we provide a Myrad of services to victims. We also have a twenty four hour hotline, so we're available twenty four seven. We have a walk-in, um, site in New London, which is open Monday through Friday, nine to five. But we, um, provide crisis counseling, we provide, um, housing, not just our emergency domestic violence shelter. But also we have six other types of housing for victims throughout, um, New London County. We also provide, um, support services in the court. Um, we provide basic needs, so we provide a, a wide range of services, um, for victims. And so anyone from the Groton area would receive whatever service they need. And, um, there has been unfortunately, you know, recent, um, actually too recent, not in Groton, but in the area. Too recent, um, one attempted murder, suicide, and one was fatal, um, murder-suicide. That are intimate partner homicide, so our, our, the need for us is greater than ever. Um, also in Groton, we do work with the police, we have an advocate who works with them. Um, and they go there once a week and, and see what type of services they need with the people they're working with. Um, so we do appreciate the support, um, that we've received in the past and hope it will continue as our need continues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Um, I will jump in. Uh, my name is Cheryl Munoz, I'm here representing UCFS Healthcare. Uh, we are a nonprofit community health, uh, center that provides care regardless of ability to pay. I really do like the, the hamburger, uh, I think it speaks for, for a lot of us. Um, we, uh, last year, in the last fiscal year, provided, um, oral healthcare, primary medical care. Uh, women's care, uh, behavioral health care and adult day center care to, uh, four hundred and thirty five Groton residents. For a total of fifty three hundred visits, the majority of those are in behavioral health. Um, so we are, uh, requesting, we really appreciate the funding that you have provided to UCFS over the years. And, uh, we are requesting this funding specifically to help support those behavioral health, uh, visits. Which were four thousand four hundred and eighty three, uh, behavioral health visits to two hundred and ten, um, Groton residents. And we do not, um, refuse care to anyone regardless of ability to pay.
Thank you.
Thank you. If, I, I can jump in, this is Anna Perch, um, with the New London Homeless Hospitality Center. I, I don't believe we, uh, requested any sort of an increase this year, but, um, I obviously can answer any questions that you have. In the meantime, you know, um, we are one of the larger, uh, homeless shelters for adults, men and women. Um, in southeastern Connecticut, and our primary, um, guests come from New London, Groton, Waterford. Um, and Norwich, I would say, um, but we also provide a host of outreach services, um, some that have directly, um, impacted Groton. With our outreach worker, David Horst, um, who's there to, uh, meet with people who are, um, outside. Um, and in need of, of emergency shelter. Um, additionally, over the last couple of years, we have started to offer some, um, services that are helping us sort of, um. Uh, stop homelessness before it begins by providing supportive services to people by way of eviction prevention. Um, foreclosure prevention and even, um, possibly homeownership. Um, so, uh, and anybody in southeastern Connecticut, particularly Groton, London are welcome to participate in those services. So we're really grateful for, um, Groton having really taken the lead and helping us, um, uh, receive some support from all of the towns. So that this poor city of New London doesn't bear, um, the entire burden of having, um, such an expensive service in their, in their town.
Thank you.
So what is your, what is your trend over the last three years in terms of demand?
Well, because of COVID, uh, during COVID, it was actually lower because people were sheltering in place and there was an eviction. Or Torium, but, uh, now it's just, um, it's, it's greater than we've ever seen it. Uh, we have a constant waiting list this winter during the winter time when we have our winter warming center open. Um, we went from thirty five people a night to eighty people a night. Um, and now we have, um, shut down the winter warming center. And we're back to by zoning, we're only allowed to have, um, up to forty people maximum. Um, and that is completely full, uh, with a very long waiting list. But like others, um, some of our other great partners have said, um, we are also offering, um, diversion, um, uh, work. Where we're, we're finding people who are on the waitlist, um, and finding solutions for them for housing so that hopefully they don't need to come, um, into shelter. Um, and then also we are doing rapid rehousing to get people, um, out, out of the shelter as quickly as possible. But I, I, I never would have thought I would have seen people, we always were really prided ourselves on being able to have our people out of the shelter. Sometimes within just two weeks and sometimes within three months, and we, we are exceeding that by, by, you know, three times right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Can I go?
Yes.
Kind of breaking up.
Okay, um, I'm Annie Stockton, I'm the Vice President at the Gemma E Moran United Way Labor Food Center. And first I'd like to thank you for considering our proposal. Over, over the past year, across all of our programs, across all of our communities, we have seen a twenty percent increase in need in food. Um, so we are trying to meet that need and we are reaching out to, um, all of the larger towns in, in New London County. To work together to really, um, combat food insecurity. Um, so our proposal is really in line with, um, Norwich and New London, what we're asking for from other communities. Um, we currently serve about twenty two thousand people each month through the whole county. Um, and specifically in Groton, we're serving about two thousand six hundred, but we know that there are many, many more who need access to food. And being the largest town in all of the county, um, there's really not many access points for food. So we really want to use this funding to be able to create a more robust pantry system for the pantries that currently exist in Groton. So all of the funding would be used to help the pantries that are already located in Groton. Um, and the need is just continuing to grow. We have a mobile food pantry distribution in Groton, and it's the largest distribution in the whole county. We're serving, um, yeah, over three hundred families each month at that distribution. We just know that we need more access points, more food, um, and more, more times during the day when people can get access to food. So we'd like to use this funding to really try to meet that significant need in Groton right now. Thank you.
Anyone else in this list? Okay.
I'm Michael Gilman, the President of Mystic River Ambulance Association, and I'm also a full-time dispatcher at the Police Department. Public safety is my life. I'm twenty five years old and all this is, uh, all the grace from the stress.
Good luck with that.
Oh, so, um, thank you again for your continued support to the organization. And as President Koenicki, we talked about insurance. Do you know how insurance works for ambulances? So when we bill, we're set by the state of Connecticut, this year it's nine hundred twenty dollars plus twenty one dollars a mile. So that's what we bill out with Medicare, we take half of that in with Medicaid, it's half of that. And to get Medicare and Medicaid money upfront, we sign an agreement with them, as does Groton Ambulance, American Ambulance, AMR Ambulance. That we will not go after the people for the balance. So I'm waiting for the numbers to come in for twenty twenty three. Um, last year, we wrote off nine hundred seventy one thousand dollars, that's money we didn't even see from the insurance companies. That the billing company just, just, doesn't even show us. And the biggest we've written off so far is over a million dollars, one million seventy four thousand eight hundred sixty seven dollars.
Town council cut you by five thousand dollars?
Yes, they did, they, um, they initially approved it on Wednesday, the Wednesday that we went to the meeting.
Yeah.
And then Thursday they reconsidered it.
And, and what was the reason for that?
Um, they didn't give a reason. We, I wasn't notified about it. I talked to Councilor Franco after, and I said, I understand it's within Town Council's right to do that. I was just really upset about the process of not being notified, so we could have been there if they had any more questions.
So you were asking for ninety?
No, I asked for eighty five.
Okay.
It was, um, let's see.
So what's, what's the five thousand dollar difference to you?
Um, last year we were gonna purchase radios to get on the state system, uh, but we had to prioritize and we ended up redoing the driveway. Because the bottom of our driveway was all torn apart, it's the original driveway from nineteen ninety three, I think the building was built. And so we repaved the driveway and that was more than expected, a lot more.
Anybody's got a driveway knows that.
Yeah. When you've got a large driveway, oh yeah. Um, so, um, we had to postpone buying the radios and pagers, which, um, affects the dispatch center. And I don't want to talk about them because, I mean, I'm gonna complain and stuff like that. But the phasing out the legacy radio system, it affects that.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Oh, and we're, we're seventy percent of our, um, budget is for personnel.
How many calls?
We do almost three thousand, we did fourteen hundred and ninety eight in Stonington last year and fourteen hundred in Groton.
I remember from last year, the, the majority of your calls in Stonington, nursing homes and the majority in Groton, not nursing homes?
Yeah, Groton, the Stonington side, we have a lot of nursing homes, Groton, we have Mystic River Healthcare and Mystic Healthcare and Rehab. And on the Stonington side, we have the cottages, Avalon, Avalon, Apple Rehab. And like President Koenicki said, they contribute a lot. Masonic Care is our number one response right now. And, um, between October and January of this year, we responded to, let's see. Thirty seven times to a private residence to assist somebody back into their house, they would call after they got done with, um, dialysis, they would call.
Thirty seven times the same?
Yes, thirty seven times we went to this house because the resident needed assistance getting in after dialysis. And she would call the police, the police can't do anything, so we would dispatch the fire department and the ambulance. And the fire department finally said, don't dispatch us anymore because we really can't help you guys get her into the house. So, but that's not a billable call in the state of Connecticut.
So you can't get insurance from that?
Nope. So that was, uh, thirty thousand nine hundred thirty dol- thirty two dollars of revenue at the old rate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All done with service agencies and, um. Yeah, knowing library, Bill Library and Marine Sewerage. Anyone?
Anyone from Marine Sewerage disposal? Oh, there you are.
All right, how's it all doing?
So we run the pump out boats for Mystic River, Thames River and Fisher's Island. Fisher's Island is separate, they pay their own bill because they're not state of Connecticut.
And we're glad you do.
Any questions? There's no change, no, that number's been held for, since I've been doing it for almost eleven years now, twelve years. So with minimum wage, everything that's going on, I, I think next year we may have to try to increase a little bit, but we're gonna try not to.
And, uh, it's made a tremendous difference. Um, many, I don't, not many people probably are boaters, but those of us that are appreciate the service. And how lucky we are in the northeast compared to if you go down the intercoastal. To some other states and they don't have it for free and it's, uh. Water quality is definitely different.
Even, I was surprised to find out even Newport, the Newport doesn't do it for free. Which I would think with a big river like that, they would.
Yeah, especially in Rhode Island.
Yeah.
Shocked.
Tax base there in Newport.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, so. All right, thank you.
I'm Chris Bradley, I'm the Director of the Library Mystic Knowing. My colleagues from our library board, Linda Costa is the President, Mary Angwell is the Vice President. I don't know what to say, i- i- it's interesting, uh, hearing the needs of the social service agencies. That come before, and I think about the public library, and, and you know, it's a remarkable service agency if you think of it. Uh, from free copying, faxing and scanning to free children's programs. And, uh, all the other services, and we're lucky, like the Bill Library, to have a beautiful building too. Which is a respite for people, I know. So you often think of, of the public library as part of the education system, and it is. But it's also part of our social services system, so we appreciate the support that we've always gotten, the town of Groton. The town of Groton supports three libraries and, um, it, it's, it's, to me, it seems like a library with a branch system. Uh, we have a wonderful main library right here in the center of town, we have beautiful Bill Library in the city. And then Mystic and Knowing in Mystic, so there are residents, we're very well served by our libraries. Uh, we did ask for, uh, uh, actually we asked for a ten percent increase. The council recommended a five percent increase, which we, we were very happy with. And, um, we had a good year last year, but it was an expensive year. And two things that contributed to that are the cost of library materials. When we were just, when people were just borrowing books, books really have not increased that, it used to be like twenty five bucks. Now it's thirty two bucks over a long, a long time. People are using audio books and ebooks, which is great, right? But the publishers have just raked us over the coals with that, you know, eh, charging libraries much more. Than they do in their individual sales, and that was never the way with print books, so that's, that's an impact. And then the other thing is the beautiful building, and we love it, it's an asset to the town of Groton. We're seeking to improve it with Library Park, and, uh, we did get some ARPA funds for that project, which is great. But, um, you know, all, everyone knows the cost of utilities and, um, how that's gone up. But also, it's eighteen ninety three, you know, the repairs and, and all that thing. And we, we do all of our own maintenance and care of the building, we don't receive any town services to, for that. So those are the things that go up, that and sad to say, the increase in the minimum wage. Because our, our employees who are working that front desk, who are the heart and soul of the library, they're pretty much making minimum wages. So, and that goes up, that is a big impact on something like a public library. Uh, but anyway, do, oh, let me, I just brag a little bit about our statistics for the last year. Uh, libraries in COVID, boy, haven't we gone like this since COVID. During COVID, people did not want to go in the public library and be around a lot of strangers or bring their kids to storytimes. And so we've been on a wonderful ride, uh, since then. Last year, we had eighty three thousand six hundred and thirty one visitors, that's just, you know, the door count. Counting, so we don't know what they did when they came in, but, uh, but it was very busy. The stars, the stars, well, they, they're in the budget too. Really, um, if, uh, we checked out, um, thirty eight thousand five hundred books, print books. To adults and children and sixteen thousand eight hundred seventy nine ebooks and audiobooks, I mean, that use has gone. And sixteen thousand eight hundred seventy-nine ebooks and audiobooks. I mean, that use is going like this. But it's interesting, the print, the print, use of print books has held steady and even slightly increased. So that's encouraging. So people are still reading and a good thing for all of us. And the other thing is we have a lot of programs at the library and and they are all free, free to people who come to them. We, we support them um, by our budget, which, to which you contribute and, and we have other fundraising too. But that was thirteen thousand three hundred and ten adults and children attended library programs and those were, those were free programs.
How is that compared to year before, for example?
The year before, I don't have the stats for the year before, but all three of these, which are kind of our primary measurements. Attendance, uh, book checkout and attend program attendance, they've all, they all went up this year.
Did receive some communication in support of Mystic Knowing, which I do every year. Very wonderful place. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
So you asked for ten percent, you got five percent, they cut you eight thousand dollars. What's, how will that difference impact you?
Yeah, that it, yeah, it's probably going to be materials. Because we don't, like, building maintenance, we don't have control over. The staff have sadly not gotten a raise. Um, and that won't go forward like that, but the cost of the materials is really, and that's probably what will, what will happen.
Thank you.
How's your donor base?
We uh, have like five hundred and fifty donors. And that can be anywhere from ten dollars to uh, get a couple thousand dollars. So we're well supported by the community. It's really encouraging. We, our funding comes, it, this is rough, but it's one-third about from the towns of Groton and Stonington. One-third from a five percent draw from our endowment. And the other one-third is from the fundraising. That's where you get the communications from us. And so um, it's that one-third, the fundraising, that's the real tough one. So that's why we appreciate the support from, from the towns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
What's the bill?
Good evening. I'm Wendy Conlon, the director of the Bill Memorial Library and with me is our treasurer, Rob Suliani.
Hello.
And the president of our board, Janet Downs is here and another member of our board, Bernadette Conklin is also here. So I wanted to fill you in a little bit about what's new at the library this year. We've added several new programs, a weekly music and movement program with live music. Our uh, children's librarian is also a musician, so she plays live music for our children's programs. And music and movement, it's, it's storytime, it's a little less on the story and and more just moving around and playing instruments. And having fun that way for children and their caregivers. A monthly Lego club, which is very popular. A series on greener living for adults and a speculative fiction book club.
Speculative fiction?
It's like science fiction fantasy. We have another book club that's in its twenty-fourth year called Food For Thought. So that's still going strong as well. We are building an outdoor learning space to complement our limited indoor space into. To the Bill Memorial, we're kind of on the small side. We don't have a program room, so we're looking outside to, to do, use that space for programming. When we can, when the weather complies. And we've completed the first phase of our window replacement program that is completely grant funded. So that will address a total of forty-three windows. Yeah, help from Groton Utilities through the Neighborhood Assistance Act. Uh, and with your help, last year, we were able to bring our staff salaries up to the twenty-twenty-two Connecticut Library Association standards. What's that?
Just a little bit behind.
Yeah, well, we were really thrilled to be able to do that. It was a long time coming, so thank you for that. It enables us to attract and retain our, our excellent staff that gives great customer service. And fun educational programs to the Groton community. And I'll turn it over to Rob.
Excuse me for reading from my notes and my voice. I don't want to leave anything what might be critical or important. I have good news. I'm glad to report we have conquered for the time being our old building syndrome. Extensive roof repairs have stopped all the building, building leaks. Uh, we no longer have our bucket brigade, emptying eight or not, or more buckets throughout the building, catching water from dripping on the floors. We have resolved our major sewer problem, which was in the basement. Key, key important thing. We are currently replacing, oh, Wendy mentioned the windows, but I want to indicate they're all energy efficient. And the purpose there is to result, hopefully result in energy savings going into the future. We have completed uh, resurfacing all the floors in the library. The floors look marvelous now. Before they were really a mess. And we have recovered over tenants, uh, removed over ten unsafe trees in the backyard. Of area where our, we hold our children's outside programs, makes it safer for them. We don't anticipate any building problems going into the next year, which is great. We don't have, we have not budgeted any key things to assist our building. Currently, our building budget is uh, three hundred and ten thousand dollars, a little over that. We spend sixty-six, we get sixty-six percent of that from our portfolio draw. We get nineteen point three percent from the town grant. We get fourteen point seven uh, is, is from fundraising and from fundraising, our savings draw. Which is a hundred percent of our revenue or cash. Where do we spend our money? We pay seventy percent for salaries and benefits. Our library staff is our part of the, of our operations. Nineteen, thirteen percent pays for technology and books. Seven percent pays for building your grounds. And the remaining ten percent pays for insurance, uh, tax preparation, telephones and other small expenses. In lieu of direct cash payment, uh, the city of Groton pays, doesn't pay any cash. What they do is they fund us for our, they prepay our utilities, so they take care of our electric, sewer, water. And that amounts to about eight thousand four hundred and fifty dollars a year, which is a great contribution to the library. Our major difficulty going forward remains to be inflation. We anticipate a continued high inflation going into the twenty-four, twenty-five year. Uh, in, excuse my voice. This is pretty much the same inflation everyone else is, everyone else is experiencing today. We anticipate book, books alone will cost a library seven point seven percent next year. Uh, this is why we're requesting a little over last year's budget. We thank you for considering our request and Wendy and I would gladly entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you.
I'm gonna thank you for the breakdown.
Yeah.
No question. That's a good thing. Thank you.
Very, very helpful.
Thank you. You could have all twelve. Oh, I wonder what, they have cats in their library.
And Mystic, is the salary standard the same as they're applying here with the bro?
Uh, we, matter of fact, we raised our uh, wages last year, getting our people off of minimum wage. Uh, the state had kept us, was creeping us up, but last year we had a considerable contribution from the town. And we were able to apply that all towards wages uh, this year, which helped our employees out.
Yeah.
It brought us with, well, Wendy can address that.
Yeah, the CLA standards, Connecticut Library Association, is that where, do you use those as funding?
Salary survey um, from a human, the Human Resources Consortium in Groton. It's good. They looked at all of positions and salaries and job descriptions and had a full review.
So do you know how you compare to CLA?
No, uh, they looked at CLA too, but they also looked at comparable jobs in our area. And uh, we actually, there were a couple like administrative assistant, which we weren't, but all the other jobs, we were confident about it. They were, but it was, it's that fact that we have so many people on minimum wage that, you know, the people at desk. But all the others were actually good.
Thank you.
And they reviewed all of our um, benefits, annual, you know, the employee, all that.
Yeah.
Things. So it's a good, that was a good year's worth of work.
Thank you.
I just want to add uh, Mystic Library, they have cats in their building, correct? Wonderful cats, two cats. Well, the bill has one big giant white dog called Clancy. And we've dictated her as the uh, public relations director.
Thank you. Now, will you be moving numbers tonight? Budget numbers?
Yeah, we'll, we'll be moving the one big, the big number for the whole account.
I see. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I think when um. So with the cuts the council made, uh, they wouldn't have the total number.
It's eight, five thousand dollars for the ambulance and eight thousand dollars for library.
Yeah, yeah.
So the ambulance is eighty thousand instead of eighty-five?
So.
Yes.
So this number is less thirteen then. Uh, do I hear a motion? Or count? One zero eight four. That should be two million four hundred.
So the council got the VNA?
That's not correct.
Okay.
So not the two council numbers. I, I got it, John, if you need.
Okay.
The regional agencies is a hundred and fifty-seven thousand four sixteen. So they're kind of the two pieces of the one oh eight four.
Yeah.
And then the health and services was one million zero eight nine eight seventy-seven. Those are the two council numbers.
That's all of them together. It's one number.
One number. So the one number altogether is?
The one zero eight nine eight seven seven.
One zero four nine seven seven.
Which is the original two four four nine four fifty, reducing the VNA and then reducing the eight thousand and the five thousand.
One zero eight nine. But what am I missing here?
Yeah, what am I missing here?
So he's taken out the.
The VNA school.
Yeah, the VNA, and then he's taken out the five thousand and the eight thousand. So.
Gotcha, okay.
So what is the?
It's one million eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven, okay. So I will move one million eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like, I think that the five thousand should be given back to the ambulance and half of the eight thousand to the library. I feel like the ambulance has done a great job. They're in a very tight budget. I think the library, I mean, at sixty-seven percent as opposed to ten percent is reasonable given their costs. So that would be my. Suggestion, but. That would increase the entire budget by um, nine thousand dollars.
So you said the library, the Lamar library?
No, Mystic would get eight thousand or four thousand?
Four thousand more.
Split it, right, okay.
And then the ambulance would get five, because I think the ambulance is a type. Given what we heard.
I'm agreeing with you. We need to move a new number.
Yeah.
I don't have a pen, so.
Well, would you, would you, would you like to uh, remove your first?
Oh, yes, I will rescind my earlier number.
And uh, and as you, Sheila, you agree with that?
I do. What is it to where?
Oh, okay. No, 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 she's withdrawing, withdrawing her other.
Yeah, we're gonna add the nine thousand or the nine thousand, so it will still be one million.
Zero nine eight eight seven seven.
Zero nine eight. Seven seven.
Eight seven, yeah. One million zero nine eight eight seven seven.
I moved that number.
That's with the, that's with the nine, nine added back in.
With nine thousand added back in.
One zero nine eight eight seven seven.
Okay, that's the number I move.
Can, can you clarify for me? Because it's, it was an eight thousand cut and a five thousand cut.
Right. I'm, I'm suggesting that half of the eight thousand cut be restored and all of the five thousand cut.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
I have moved in. We need a second.
Nice. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, well.
It's in the mouth all the way.
Well, still, to get it through the. To get it. To get it passed, passed through, it'll have to be a two-thirds.
Yeah.
We'll see.
And I say.
We'll see.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Look what you're doing.
Thank you.
All right, where are we?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was the tricky part. They had this twice.
Thank you very much.
Really?
A long time ago.
Yes, and I've been all, I started a year ago. Yeah, that's my first name one. I understand. Okay. Oh, that's all that.
All ten eighty-four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No. One oh four six, count one zero four six, planning and developing services on page one twenty-eight. Well, that sounds like something you could cut. Slacking.
All right, let me know when you're all good. So um, I'll try to make it brief. Yeah, this is. And what we will talk about, so first the department budget and then we can talk about the CIP items after that. But you know, kind of big picture, our main role in the town, you know, one of the things we do is we are a revenue generator. We help expand the tax base. We help direct, you know, growth and development plan where new housing, you know, which we've been hearing a lot of, about lately in town. Should go and, you know, ways of doing that and trying to have those uh, longer term conversations with the community. Um, last month, I believe it was, we gave an overview to the RTM about a lot of the economic development projects and initiatives that we're working on. You know, one of the big highlights of that is, you know, a lot of people uh, see the construction that's happening at the old Sealy School, Triton Square Development. When that is fully built out, that was not on the tax rolls before, we'll be getting over a million dollars in new taxes a year from that.
Oh.
I expect the number to actually be a lot more, but a million is a very conservative estimate. And that's going to be new revenue coming to the town that we weren't getting before. And our department really helps, you know, our boards and commissions, our council mold the development patterns of the town now into the future. This past year, uh, we've gotten millions of dollars in grants, uh, whether it was the six point four million dollar uh, planning chat, the community challenge grant from state, which is going to be reinvested in aquatic bridge area. Uh planning chat, the community challenge grant from state, which is going to be reinvested in aquatic bridge area. Uh al- almost seven hundred thousand dollars in resiliency grants for looking at climate change and sea level rise initiatives within the town. We're applying for another two million dollars or up to two million dollars for our community development block grant this year. Uh as well as another number of grants, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Department of Defense, another three hundred, three hundred and fifty from DOD. Looking at housing, um and you know, other sustainability grants that we're looking at for over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There's a lot of money that we go out for and after. Um and and that's, you know, kind of the planning, the economic development, the sustainability. But really, one of the biggest eye openers for me, looking at the budget this year and last year is our building division. When I started working for the town and fees and building permit fees, we were taking in about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So that's revenue that helps offset what we ask for back from, you know, from taxes. Last year, our building permit revenues were over nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Wow.
My building permit staff is the same as when I started, like as far as the number of people, different people are working here, but it's the same number of staff. Um this year, originally, we thought we were going to bring in six hundred and fifty, it's going to be eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we're bringing in a lot more revenue than we were before, and that's just from building permit fees in addition to what all.
Is that all general fund? Is that all?
That all goes to the general fund and that offsets what we then require from the general fund for, you know, our, any of our increases or our department budget. Um next year, we're estimating seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in building permit fees. I always like to be more conservative in our estimates, but I'll bet you, I know, I bet dollars to donuts next year when we're here, we say, oh, we estimated seven fifty, but. We're actually getting a different number. So just kind of wanted to give you some of the overview of that.
I need for you to go back. You said something about the aquatic bridge, you know, that's, that's my area.
Yeah.
What kind of, what are you doing? What kind of development or what is the plan?
Oh, so uh.
Aquatic bridge.
Yeah, so we got some money from the state to work on um rebuilding the aquatic bridge walkway down by the water.
Okay.
Um we're getting money for more sidewalks, um east, west sidewalks through there. There's um some money that we're getting as part of that grant for uh improvements to the bike way and extension of the bike way through there. There's also two point, what is it, four million dollars as part of that? That's going to build, help the Groton Housing Authority build fifty one new units at Grassall Gardens. So not what they've already gotten approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission, that's a different project. So there's going to be another fifty one units that they're going to be looking to build there. So um.
Will there be any three bedrooms?
Um I don't.
Seems to be the thing.
Yeah, I I.
I was talking to John earlier, that's.
Yeah.
But this is grass, the Grassall Gardens is, is that, is disabled? Is that family? I mean.
I I don't remember off the top of my head what type of units that they will be, but it's fifty one new units.
Just senior housing.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. And that was a grant that we got from the state. Uh we're still working on the final paperwork of it, but that none of those projects haven't started yet.
So town council cut you by one twenty five?
Yes.
Well, how does that feel?
We can make it work. I mean, it hurts. It certainly does. They cut some things back um for some intern positions that we had budgeted as well as um. Trying to think what the other cuts were. Give me a second here. Druggling too many pieces of paper. Me, well, also, uh some of that was um our ARPA position. Was being funded out of our department when in fact it should be put in a different line item. So really, um the biggest cuts from that. Were two intern positions that we had and some other uh software uh needs that we're looking at utilizing.
Being even a little bit optimistic, can you make up for some of that, given what you just talked about in terms of your generating revenue?
Well, I can't add to my bottom line, but yes, I mean, when we look at what our original estimate was, it was six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Actually, yeah, if you look at our budget, our original estimate for our requested this year, we're pretty revenue with six fifty.
Yeah.
If you have your revised numbers, I don't know if the finance director has increased that, but I uh told her that we want to increase that to seven thousand dollars.
Revenue.
In revenue.
Right. All right.
And that's just revenue from building permit fees, that.
I get that.
Not revenue from the taxes that of the other projects. Just as I talk, I'm talking about multiple parts of revenues.
Thank you.
Um with the building permits, are they been? Mostly, are they residential?
It's a mix.
A mix?
Yeah, I mean, we're.
I know, I know a lot of people are doing. Kitchens and, you know, that kind of stuff, and I imagine.
We're seeing a lot of remodels, a lot of kitchens, a lot of additions, because we're not building a lot of new single family homes.
Right.
People that are looking at, all right, how can I improve my home to either continue to live there or when people are selling homes and new people are moving in. A lot of reinvestments going into these homes.
Yeah, because we're in that situation where we're planning on um only living on the first floor.
Yeah.
Yes, we moved the laundry, want to move the laundry up the second from the basement. And um and then add a, add another bathroom and all the builders are so busy.
Yeah.
And if, you know, so if they give you a quote, it's like.
Oh, it's, it's astronomical.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, there, there's not enough people getting into the trades and so um sidebar, tomorrow night, we're actually, uh I don't know if any of you have seen, we've been doing these. Once a month, community conversation meetings. Uh one, we've been having an outside expert come and then maybe a week or two afterwards, I've been holding. Just kind of like an open house at the library. If people want to continue having that conversation, tomorrow night, we're doing one about housing, all about housing.
Okay.
Okay, I'm good.
Yeah.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay. Well, how about I move two million seventy three thousand eight hundred ninety nine dollars? Is that the right number?
So the council's number. Try to get you the council's number again.
Oh wait, because this is out of date.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. So what if I do that?
Was one million. I I love the two million, but you know, I got to be honest here.
Wanted to actually.
I think you're gonna be okay.
Yes, but the art, um the council number is one million eight hundred and fifty four thousand. One million eight five four zero three two.
Okay, in that case, I'll move one million eight hundred and fifty four thousand and thirty two dollars.
Second.
One million eight hundred and fifty four, if you call it zero three two.
Any uh. How much was the two interns positions?
Uh a total of twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand. Okay, any? Further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous at that number.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for throwing this thing.
We're trying, we're trying. We have a really good team. I'm very fortunate for that. And doing a lot of good hiring and uh we lo- we lose good people, but then we bring excellent people on as well.
I think it's kind of the nature of what you do in the sense that people, they want to move up, they got to find another community.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm always on the lookout for great talent, because I've been, that's been something I've been searching for, for my whole career.
Wonderful.
Uh the next line item, it it was put uh the CIP for technology, the municipal parking so- solution software. It was put under my budget, but it's actually a police department line item. It wasn't on the public safety RTM committee meeting last night. The chief talked to them about it. But I'm prepared to talk about it because it's on your agenda, so you would have to approve of it.
Okay.
Um.
It's forty seven K?
Yes, uh basically, it's um some handheld devices that the police department would use for parking enforcement. It has a printer on it. People can pay directly to the town. We can track our tickets, um which we cannot.
Be like going to a restaurant, you have to pay and the officer is going to give you your receipt.
It it will really streamline the whole ticket issuance processing.
You could just behave yourself, not get a ticket.
Yes.
Forty seven.
Thank you. You know. So this is for people who are receiving this, people who are receiving parking tickets, the police are able to issue the ticket.
On hand, from the machine, yes. It'll really streamline the whole process.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good.
Damn.
Primarily in downtown?
Yes.
Downtown Mystic.
What is our current revenue from parking tickets downtown?
I don't know that.
That's going up, I hope it's going up.
Well.
Every time I go down. Oh my gosh.
Well, this is challenging to park.
There's, there's a downside to being more efficient at issuing tickets.
Yeah.
Uh it it's, it causes blow by, blowback, especially when some of the people getting ticketed are residents of that area. Their complaint is they can't find enough parking.
Yeah.
That's not going to change.
Yeah.
John, do you know, I know historically, there's been a conversation about metered parking, especially with Stonington. Where are we at that?
So Stonington had, I think is going to be relooking at that issue and possibly bringing it up for a vote again. Um because I think the last couple of times it went out, there was very low turnout and I think there was some confusion on the issue. Uh one time it was uh compounded with another parking issue larger in the town. I think that had to do with Clyde Cider Mill.
Okay.
And then the last time, I I, it either didn't pass by one vote or it was a tie vote, it was very, very close. So um I I know that's something that they've been talking about going and doing again. Our council has more been waiting to see what Stony is going to do, but this.
This would, this could use it either way, it doesn't matter.
This would use either way, and this would be kind of a a first step in some of the parking management, because it it would just, it would make it a lot easier to us enforce, to enforce the laws that are in place now.
Yep.
Okay.
I moved for forty seven.
I said. Three seven K. CIP F, project F. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Again. Now, the last CIP.
So there are two items there, um open space and our plan of conservation and development. So the open space acquisition, uh we'd actually zeroed that one out at the manager level.
Right.
But um I, I'm not sure if it was put here inadvertently, but it was zeroed and.
Zero.
Zero.
Yep. Um the planet conservation and development, that's our plan that we do once every ten years and sets the the framework for. How we grow and develop really for the next ten plus years. Uh we've gotten some funding CIP last year. It's a project we're about to start, but um communities of our size and looking what it costs to other municipalities. We want to do a lot of public engagement. I mean, you know, conversations in the community and getting buy in on a lot of these complicated issues are very important. And we want to make sure we have enough funding to do it, hence why we asked for the extra fifty thousand dollars. Uh again, this is something we do every ten years and. We've had a hard time getting people involved and engaged in understanding the importance of 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 this document and and really the gravity that it carries.
Does this have anything to do with um water?
A little bit.
You know, one of these water things about what's happening in Mystic and.
Oh, oh, of about sea level rise and stuff. That is, that will be worked into it. Yeah, so that's something that our department also does. But we're actually working on a different plan, our cl- uh our climate action plan that will really dive deep into that topic.
Okay.
Um that's something we received a substantial over a two hundred thousand dollar grant to work on that climate action.
Yeah.
So that'll go hand in hand with this. Um you know, our planet conservation and development will kind of set some of the broad spectrum of things. It'll talk about climate change and. The policies of that will be integrated in, but our our climate action plan really does kind of that really more specific to.
Yeah, and. Water is rising. I mean, our, our docks, our dock, our main dock, it's off of code. I don't remember it being underwater very much, you know, big storm.
Yeah.
And now it's underwater like twice a month almost. You know, for just a small storm.
It's not going to change, it's going to be worse.
Yeah.
So this is sixty D, you went to public hearings for the planning?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's fifty thousand?
Yes.
Yes.
Good.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Those. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Didn't.
Oh, wait, I, I, no, what?
Oh, yes. Oh, oh, I'm looking at, I'm looking at my notes.
I was waiting for you.
I was, I was leaping ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, a motion.
I'm planning, I'm motion to move it. Second. Fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Plan of conservation.
Conservation and development.
Development.
Okay, now we can vote on that.
Aye.
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 All right, unanimous, three, four, zero, zero. All right. And now for adjournment. Great at this.
You know.
We had an early night. I guess. I moved to adjourn.
Okay.
At seven.
Yeah.
At seven thirty two. Basically done. Leading is adjourned.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.